Seven o'clock, Planning Commission is convened. It's March 31st, 2021. All the commissioners are present. Lori, if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And Ted, could you offer an invocation for us? Okay. We're going to change our, some of our practices a little bit here. And open up our, the first part of our Planning Commission meeting for public comment. Same as the City Council does in their meetings. So, I only see one person on. I don't, we don't notify people in advance or they don't sign up in advance with the zooming. So, we'll just take it as it comes if there are any.
That might be the way it's showing there. I think there are four people. If you look down the bottom corner, bottom right says four. That's how many people, I think just maybe the way it's, the screen set and show.
So are there any interest in any public comment at this time for those who are zoomed into the meeting? I gather not, so.
George Thompson here.
Oh, George, okay, George, go ahead.
Okay, I, I didn't want to comment necessarily. I just want to make sure you guys got the memo that I sent to you so that it could be an item of discussion tonight.
Yes, we got it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Do you see any Jody on your? Okay. We will move on then to the business at hand. I got the minutes out for our meeting last week. I didn't get any, I got some corrections that I made to it and sent it out again. I didn't have any comments as to any substantive changes or anything to it.
I would move that we approve the minutes of March 24th meeting.
Okay, motion to approve them, approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, second by Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Next item on the agenda is review of, our continued review of building height ordinance and recommendations.
I think, I think we ought to get at least 50 more ideas.
I was working on that.
Well, we've had some input, some additional input and thoughts. I think we kind of know the direction that we're going on it from comments that have been made. So maybe it's a matter of, we want to look at maybe different words or a different way. I think we need to keep it as simple as we can and as clear as we can and as, as short as we can. As long as we don't short it to the disadvantage of the, of the definition that we want to, want to put there, so.
I like what Lori did in shortening with the, with the one exception that you met or that you made, Wayne. Still worried about that house print or that house.
Depicts that diagram?
Not the diagram, I'm fine with those, I love.
It's describing.
I'm just worried about how using the architect rendering of the, whatever that's called, that you can drop onto the, the slope of the, of the terrain and then using that to get all of your measurements or predictions or whatever. Because I mean, we've gone from a line or a group of lines or lines vertically opposite or opposite the same sides. Then we've gone with what Lori said, maybe three points on the perimeter on three different sides. I just, I still wonder how we can describe that so that everybody knows what's going on.
Okay, one thing that I think we should ignore would be a pit in the middle of the house or a bump. I think we should just look around the perimeter because if they're going to set their house on a little bump or a pit, it wouldn't be seen as long as the outside edges are, you know, okay. I think we can ignore what's happening in the middle.
Maybe with just a footnote or something, just say that information if there is, if there are a couple of bumps or a couple of pits, we're still going to.
Yeah, just go around the edge.
You don't think the way that we had described it articulates that enough? I mean, that's what we want to do, I know, with that line.
This shall be drawn, let me check, can I read this just real quick? Natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjacent, you can change that to adjoining, the structure on any one side to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite adjacent to the structure, opposite side adjacent to the structure. So it's the natural grade on any one side, natural, natural grade point adjacent to the lowest natural. So you're taking the highest on any one side of the house to the opposite side of the house, lowest spot. And it can be on any side, right?
Opposite.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it says it can be, will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjacent to the structure on any one side.
Yes.
So basically on any one side, you gotta then take that line and go from the high side basically down to the low side. Is what you're doing on any side of that.
From front to back.
Or side to side.
Back to front or from side to side.
Yep, to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite side adjacent to the structure. That natural grade reference line will then be visually projected and run throughout. And as my other comment, do we need to and run? Can we just say visually protected throughout, projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure? So basically what you're doing is you're saying we can draw a point from here to here, point from here to here.
No.
No.
Or. Just one point.
Not and.
One reference, not, not, we don't have.
Says any.
An intersecting, intersecting line from, from one side, from each of the four sides.
So then maybe.
There's one line drawn from the, from over the highest natural grade to the lowest natural grade.
So, okay, so maybe that answers it where it says any one side.
Where that whichever, whichever that side is.
Now you are, when they have cases where the highest point and the lowest point are on the same side of the house.
Yes, or.
But only then you would be going from one side to the other side.
This is where it says opposite, so you're drawing a line from there, opposite side. So you can't draw the same side.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So if you're, if you're starting point on this side, you have to then draw that line to the opposite side of the house. You can't go to the same side. That's going to be.
Saying on the same side, maybe the lowest point.
Well, it says.
But we're saying you can't use, if it is, you won't use that.
Yeah, you won't use that, so then you're taking, so basically what it's saying is you're taking that line. Now you've got a line and you're raising that line 35 feet and any.
No, no, no.
Of the house.
You're leaving that line.
Or leaving that line there.
There. I, I understand what you're saying, but.
You're, you're leaving that line there and then any spot of the house you measure.
The roof line.
Goes to that line.
Down to, to that line.
Goes down to that line.
Below it.
Yeah, and that line is, runs throughout the, the whole footprint.
Of the house.
Of the house.
And the reason I like, I, I worried with it, we were getting too complicated with prisms and multiple points.
I know, myself too.
You've got something that's really abstract and you get Lori's point about if it's a bump or a hole, I think you do ignore that in the footprint. The, the only concern I have is if the, if the hole carries out. And then we say measure from the high point down to the low, to the natural grade. You know what I mean?
Yeah, are, are we saying measure from the highest point to the lowest point? Or the highest point to the lowest point on the opposite side?
Right.
That's what we're saying.
So it may be the lowest point.
Yeah.
For the high, just from the peak down to the reference line wherever directly below that peak.
Yeah, but she's talking about where we draw the reference.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
The reference line is there, we'll measure the 35 feet from the highest point down to that reference line.
Okay, so the lowest point that we are picking may not be the lowest point.
No, well.
Not necessarily, but it will be the lowest point opposite of the high side.
Okay, so we're picking the highest, the lowest point on the opposite side, but one of the other sides may be lower.
But in theory, you're not going to build a house that would do this, right?
No, yeah.
So if, if, if you're on the high side, you're going to have a house that's going to have to step.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just thinking of wall that's showing it may be exposed and dropped down lower on another side.
You're back to that design.
Yeah, that's, I think that's getting almost too.
I, well, I almost wanted to bring some Play-Doh and Lego so that you could stick it in and see that the lowest side may not be on the opposite side of the highest side. But, but we're just doing the opposite side.
Going from opposite.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, if somebody wants to pick the lowest point on one side and go to the highest point opposite.
Opposite.
Fine, too, I mean, the line will be the same. So they've got a choice to make.
Yeah.
Kind of which of the four sides they want to take your measure from. And I would assume that they would do it to their advantage, whatever, whatever that is. But give them that, give them that option to do. It's not that they have to pick, they can pick the highest on any four sides of that. In some homes, they've got, you know, six, eight, 10 sides.
Yeah.
So wherever they pick that high, the opposite of that structure, that's where they need to pick their low.
Okay, yeah.
And that in general will give you an average, I think of a good average of the house. Yeah, because you're going to have different, you know, you might have a few different circumstances where maybe your high side's here and your lowest point is here, but you're going over here to the offset, which may be a little higher. But in reality, your house is, is not going to do weird things. You're going to just build a house across there. You may have a little more house exposed over here, but you're still only 35 feet. I mean, like I said, you're going to find ways to probably, you know, circumstances that could be a little, you know, where someone could, I'm not, I don't want to use the word poke hole, but you're going to find a circumstance where someone's going to have something unique that you may have to look at a little differently. But in general, I think this addresses most, most cases. And doesn't complicate it, so you've got a line to measure to and not a, I was getting worried when we were coming up with this weird prism thing and all that, because then, then you're really talking 3D visual plans to figure out where you're measuring and.
That's why I said, how are we going to apply this if we're using a 3D measurement on a 2D representation?
Right.
How do you do that?
Yeah.
Well, I just thought on the elevations, you would just have the number of the, the top and the bottom of the house on each side. Don't you have, you have an elevation of the house on a plan? And I thought it could have the height, do they have any numbers on there at all?
All numbers.
Okay, and so that would show each side two dimensionally, but you would have all the sides shown. So that's how you would do it.
Talking about taking an average of those four sides?
No, just if they have, you know, their house and then it has a number at the top of the house and then a number at the bottom of the house on the plan.
Well, the side plan has contour lines, which are the elevation.
I think you were talking about using that instead of a reference line.
Yeah.
Instead of a reference line, they put an elevation on each corner of the house of the natural grade. And then they show usually the overall height and this would be on the house elevations. Which I think could be okay, but there might be that odd time where you've got one corner of the house that's either sitting on a bump or down in a hole. You know what I mean? So you're going to have just a weird where you have, may have a.
If you're measuring from the corner.
Yeah, if you're measuring from the corner, it could be sitting on a bump or the rest of the house is on pretty good ground and you got that one corner that's a bump that they plan on digging down or a hole they have to fill in where you would show, where it wouldn't measure up.
Okay, um, on the definition, do we still have, the building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak? Do we need to say roof ridge or peak or can we just say roof?
I'd say roof peak.
Roof ridge or peak, because you want to go to the top of that. Roof, you've got 20, maybe 10, 15, 20 feet of roof.
Uh-huh.
So you want to go to the peak.
But can't we just say, didn't you say something like no part of the roof can be more than 35 feet over?
Oh, I guess, wow.
We're measuring, again, I want to try to stay consistent with measuring down.
Okay.
So.
Snow part.
Easiest way is to have the peak or the ridge, which generally are pretty well defined. And that, now, I want, we need to work a little bit too on this flat roof issue. I'm not, I, I'm a little, I'm still a little, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Work on that a little bit based upon too, on some comments that were made to us about. And I, and I don't have an answer why, other than we were kind of following Park City a little bit.
The, the answer to that goes back to the discussion we have had about how it fits in to the surrounding area. And if you take a, a house like this, you still have a lot of that edge view type of thing and it fits into that. If you have a thing like this, you're blocking off.
More of the sightline.
Half of the sight that you're making that. And that's, I think, based on my research, that's one of the reasons a lot of these cities make flat roofs or what I like to call flat like roofs, because they're not really flat, like was mentioned. There, there is a little slope there to.
Or they could come up like this and go over.
Sure.
Too, but still, it's not the peak, so I can see that views a little bit are, are lowered somewhat. You know, they're not more covered up with a flat roof that reaches the same height as the.
Right.
As the peak or the roof ridge. So I, I can see that, so thanks for that.
Does that?
Yeah, and I think that's a good reason why it ought to be lower than the peak.
Yeah, good, because you're going to have a roof that's like this and then your house is maybe 20 feet. Let's say your roof is 10 feet pitched, whereas a flat roof, it would go straight up and then that. So now you've got 30 feet of house blocking instead of 20 feet of house and then some like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that address your question?
Yes.
I cut you off, Lori, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Took me into that other area.
Yeah, I, I kind of think we should have the flat roofs be lower because most cities do that too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I can see how visually it would block more sightlines. I, I'm just reading through the definition, the last one that you said.
Okay, well, that's kind of the one, if, if we're going to make any changes, let's make them to that. I mean, I think if, if we do feel we need to tweak it a bit here or there.
Okay, I, I would propose that we change the word adjacent to adjoining or intersecting. What word did you say?
Adjoining was the one I thought, I mean, if, adjacent means next to, adjoining means touching, so I.
Yeah, I like it, touching more instead of next to.
Natural grade point.
Adjoining.
Adjoining.
Adjoining the structure.
Mm-hmm. It's just a definition.
To me, it seems more where they intersect or right where they touch instead of kind of next to it.
Mm-hmm.
On the opposite side, adjoining. Okay, and then going on, I say this natural grade reference line will be visually projected, take out and run.
That was just a semantic seeing throughout.
Entire footprint.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good job, Ted.
That of the structure. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward. You want to use plum line or plum bob or whatever you were.
Plum vertical distance.
What was the phrase that they used in?
Plum vertical distance.
Plum vertical distance, which I, I didn't think was too bad, that's pretty.
Which has been, let's see, roof or peak directly downward or peak direct, peak plum vertical downward?
Plum vertically downward?
Uh, I don't like that. Plum implies down, doesn't it?
Plum, just straight, to me.
Yeah, maybe just directly downward.
Directly downward, that works to any point along the natural grade reference line, which has been extended throughout the structure footprint. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point on the roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet, measuring from the highest roof ridge or peak to the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak. Flat roofs must be no more than 30 feet in height. Do we need to define flat roofs anymore?
I like the phrase flat like rather than flat.
Flat roofs and alike?
No, just the word, I believe the word flat like.
Flat like roofs.
But if, if it's not really flat, I mean, we know that, that below the eve line, the roof that's below that is going to be sloped so that you get runoff, right? But the ridge, the eve line is really going to be flat.
That's true.
Usually what they do is they start, they use a, because we have a flat, a couple of flat roofs. We use a styrofoam that just has a slight taper to it and they really start in the middle and then kind of taper it out so your, all your edges are all the same height. You just have like a hump in the middle, is basically what it is. If, well, and I guess unless it's like ours, we've got one over a deck line where they had to kind of start towards the back and just taper it towards the front, but.
If, if it really is sloped even a little bit, even like one to 12, then it really, you're going to measure it from the highest point.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's not a flat, a really flat, if it's sloped just a little bit, that's going to be where you're going to measure it. It's from the peak of.
If we said flat roofs are measured from and must be no more than 30 feet in height? Do we need to add that?
Well, I don't know, I mean, you want to say?
I mean, we're, we're saying.
Anything below five to 12?
No.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't the building definition already design, determine what a flat roof is?
The flat roof is measured from wherever the top of that flat roof is, straight down, just like.
And I think a building code defines what a flat roof is. So I don't know that we need to get into the definition of a flat roof here. That'd be my opinion.
Well, I guess my concern is, is if you've got, like we have in Summit, there are a lot of roofs in Summit that are very shallow slopes.
Yeah, they're flat roofs.
But they're technically not flat.
They, they call them a flat roof by definition.
Yeah, they're not peaked.
They're not peaked, so they, yeah, and, and generally you can easily tell a flat roof because it's going to have a rubber membrane on it where the rest, shingles and metal will be on. Anything that has, you know, so flat roof, you have to put that rubber membrane on it. It's pretty easy to tell what a, and even mine has a slight slope to it, but it's a flat roof. By definition, it's a flat roof. And I think, I don't know that we want to get into fine flat roof because I think that's already done. Um, but I would throw one more wrench into it, not a wrench, a thought. Do we want to say anything about a mansard roof? Because it's the same thing as a flat, basically.
It comes up like this and then, is that the mansard?
Like a barn?
It's flat on top.
No, not the mansard, excuse me, the, it's one I'm thinking of that just has the, um, little thing that sticks up.
Like that building in New York.
Let me look here, through some roof things, let me look here real quick, I'll get it.
Our old, our old definition, I think, had that name.
Yeah, I can't think of the name right now, just slipped me. It's basically like a flat roof, only the roof sits down in.
Gambrel?
Say go a gambrel, it's like a barn, that's a gambrel.
Mansard?
It goes up partway and one, and one, and then it changes.
Mansard?
Mansard?
Mansard maybe is what we're.
Parapet, that's where I'm, parapet roof, parapet.
Well, parapet, well, that, that's just for it standing up above the roof.
Right.
Right, so you've got that little parapet that sticks up above the roof all the way around.
Like a little fence all the way around.
Yeah. Yeah.
But is, is the roof generally?
No, it's flat.
It's flat.
It's a, that's the picture right there, see a flat roof and it's got this little part that sticks up.
Okay.
It's a parapet roof, yeah.
Would be a flat roof then.
It's kind of like a castle, castle has a parapet around and there's, there's a place where the soldiers or the, would stand and they would shoot over the top of the parapet.
Yeah. It is a separate style of roof.
It is, it would be a flat roof.
Usually those are designed in rainy climates to keep water from rushing off all the way around, just a lot.
I don't think we defined any up here.
I, I think.
Commercial buildings have them.
Classrooms or the church house down here, they use a lot of those.
The parapet roof, yeah. It is a separate roof style from flat.
But similar.
Yeah, similar to a flat, but it's its own defined roof style.
Okay, well, with those, the changing of adjacent to adjoining, taking out and run, how does everybody feel about that?
I feel pretty good about it.
PDC.
What did you say, PDC?
PDC.
These aren't close.
Yeah.
Or if you were a farmer, or be some other words.
Yeah, I was going to say I grew up on a farm, so I was a little surprised.
Carpenter.
Same as a farmer.
Well, it's enough for government.
Yeah.
Could I make a comment? George Thompson here. Did you guys read anything about the contoured surface concept that I wrote in my memo? That is much more general and you don't have to worry about adjoining or adjacent or anything like that. And it's not a line, it's a surface underneath the house.
Yeah, we kind of talked about that on our first night and didn't feel that it was descriptive enough in talking about the surface under the house. So, we hopefully have maybe defined it a little more specificity.
I think, yeah, contoured surface to me kind of got back to the weird 3D plane thing. And I don't know how, if you're reviewing a plan, you would be able to figure that out in just looking at a plan set.
Yeah. Any other thoughts? Lori?
I still like Mapleton's.
No.
Finish.
No, absolutely, we're not, this is.
Yes.
No.
It was so simple.
It was so long.
It was not simple.
Elkridge had the long one, but Mapleton I thought was very simple. No, Elkridge had the long one, but Mapleton, I thought was very simple.
Wow. I don't remember.
Mapleton was this, this one that had the finished grade and the natural grade. I mean, the, the picture, I think outside of the finished grade, doing the same thing that we're trying to do.
Well.
It's not a.
My concern on that was that, I mean, I've seen some of the houses in Mapleton where they have really raised the finished grade way above the natural grade. And it actually provides where you can have, I couldn't quite read it whether it said eight feet above the natural grade. There was a note on there somewhere that said you can have the finished grade eight feet above the natural grade, that bothers me.
Oh, no, I thought it said that they would measure from natural or finished grade, whichever was more.
That's what Mapleton says.
Lower.
Yeah, lower, whichever is lower.
Mapleton says, um, I got it right here, the height of a building is measured as a plum, as the plum vertical distance from any point on the roof to the natural or finished grade, whichever is more restrictive. The only thing there is it gives you, once again, you're measuring to the natural grade, which could be if you're digging like I said in a.
But it says from any point on the roof. You could pick an eve.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I know they don't want that and that's not their intention.
Oh.
But that's the, the door that they leave open, and they say any point on the roof. We halfway up the roof, I mean, the roof is a large thing, so, I mean, the picture kind of defines that, but again.
Well, all, all you would need to say would be from every point on the roof.
No.
So every point would have to be within.
The highest point.
I want to do the highest point.
Well, that would include the highest and the lowest, they would all have to be under the thirty-five feet.
I guess the question is, does Mapleton like their height building ordinance?
I don't know, I didn't ask.
Well, I just, I just thought it was.
Again, because of the problems that I know that we've had with our current ordinance, they don't, again, with this picture, it's a side picture. So what if there's a mound of earth in the middle of the building? We've tried to compensate for that by this reference line that we're using.
Yeah, what he's saying is, what if it went like this?
They just take the line on the side of a building.
Now you're measuring from here up. And you could, technically, you could build the center of your house up higher and lower these points if this were a hump like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're measuring to the natural grade, I think that was the idea of having a grade line is to eliminate that.
Yeah.
Deep hole or big hump.
Okay, I see that point.
Everybody but Lori.
We've taken out, we've taken out some of the repetitiveness where we had to repeat some phrases two or three times. I like that we shortened that.
And I think with some, a couple of these diagrams, I think it clears up any, if there is any ambiguity there or any uncertainty, I think the diagram will, will address that.
Yeah, picture's worth a thousand words.
It is. And we, and if, if we get down the road and we, there's all questions about one particular thing and then the diagram will help, and we, we could put another diagram in easily enough to, to further show that, not, not change the ordinance, just identify in some way, you know, it's not.
Case in using a drawing.
Yeah. So. Are you ready for a motion? I'll, I'll entertain a motion on.
I move that we accept the ordinance as we have adjusted it tonight for presentation to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't oppose, but I was stating because I, I like to see everything written on these difficult challenges, even though I've heard it a thousand times.
Let me read it.
Okay.
Just, okay. The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line directly below that point. Natural grade is defined as a grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. A natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjoining the structure to any one side to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite side adjoining the structure.
Wait, did you take out highest or did, did you read that?
I read high. A natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjoining the structure on any one side to the lowest natural grade point on the opposite side adjoining the structure. The natural grade reference line will be visually projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to any point along the natural grade reference line, which has been extended throughout the structure footprint. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of the natural ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet, measuring from the highest roof ridge or peak to the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak. Flat roofs must be no more than thirty feet in height. That's what the, what the word change is that we incorporated tonight. That.
I mean, I, I'm mostly comfortable with it, but I still have some reservations, it still seems.
Wordy?
Yes.
We could take out roof ridge or peak. Just put roof.
That's where it's where we got it, there's other places that we kind of repeat ourselves.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
Three times.
And I guess my view is it's done for clarity.
Right. Though I understand the reasoning.
And it is a little wordy, I, you know, but I think.
But it's wordy, it's Mapleton's.
Not right.
Elkridge.
Elkridge. Mapleton's was pretty short, it was Elkridge that was, yeah.
You can just, you can just report my estimation.
Hey. Would. I mean, I've got, I've got, I've got.
Were you voting for the president?
Yes. I've got a copy of what I did, other than, let me, uh, let me change this with the words.
Adjacent to adjoining.
To adjoining.
And again, I know that we all understand that we are kind of ignoring bumps and pits, but it doesn't say anything in that. Right?
Well.
Well, but.
By the, by the natural grade reference line, you.
From the height to the low visually throughout.
You've done away with those. I think the reason is, it's, it's just I'm reading this two or three times and maybe the reason it's sounding a little wordy, I think is just, which I don't, I, I think the way it's written is, is, is good because it's doing two things. The first point is defining exactly what they have to, the criteria are, so to speak, it's defining the criteria, that first two thirds of the paragraph. And then the last third is saying, in order for a house to meet this, now that we've defined the criteria, now in order for the house to meet this, then it goes on to say no, because we say up here, no, let's see, the height of the building is measured from any and all points, and, and I think we say that twice, but the natural grade reference line will be drawn on one side, the natural will agree the opposite. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge directly down the point along the ridge. So we kind of define what the conditions are, and then that last sentence, two sentences.
It's how it's mentioned.
Is basically saying in order for a house to meet this, this is what.
Okay, now.
So it kind of repeats, but it's saying, this is what you have to now in order for your house to meet it, this is what it has to.
In the, is it in the city ordinances where it has definitions of words?
It is.
Can we put in there natural grade and natural grade reference line and then take it out of this so we aren't defining it?
The natural grade, I think, is already there.
The natural grade reference line is not.
Could we add that?
We create it.
Could, yeah, could we create it and add it in there and then take out the definition from this because it's already defined? And that would shorten this out.
I'd rather have it in there.
Yeah, I think it'd be better.
Because.
So.
Regen.
I'm falling trying to apply one part of that, not realizing that there was another definition that really changed this one.
Yeah. And usually sometimes like in the engineering world, we'll read a spec and a lot of times I don't go read the definitions of stuff, you know, and, and unless I really have to start searching, I like where it's all in one spot. And you just go to that spot and you know exactly what you're doing. And you're not having to flip through a book to find different.
Here's how natural grade is, is defined in our definitions. The elevation of the undisturbed natural surface of the ground prior to any excavation or.
No, I think we could strike that sentence here since it's already in there, but I would leave natural grade reference line here. That, that, if we wanted to eliminate anything, because there's a sentence where we say natural grades defined as a grade prior to to any construction or land disturbance, which we also say in the definition. So if we struck that one sentence, yeah, you know, it's only one sentence, so maybe it's not that big a deal, but.
Give you my example. In the definitions, it talks about the basement being four feet below the adjoining finished grade. How are you going to measure, measure that before the house is built? Well, true. And then you go elsewhere, I finally found out, and you define finished grade. And finished grade is at the front of the house after it's settled.
That's what it says is the definition?
That's the definition of finished grade, is at the front of the house after it's settled.
So the back is at the finished grade or the side is not finished?
Definition of the basement, and the adjoining finished grade to me was at the back of the house. And how could you have a basement that was four feet below the adjoining finished grade? That's why I said it was not possible.
Okay.
And then I finally found the finished grade is really at the front of the house. So you can have a walkout basement in that situation because the finished grade at the front of the house is there. And the back of the house may be down here, but the basement is four feet below the finished grade at the front of the house, so you have a walkout basement. That, that's just an example.
Yeah.
Of why I think it's important to maybe have both definitions in here. So somebody doesn't have, well, where do I define finished grade, where can I find that? Maybe somebody's smart, you know, is not, is not smart or not stupid like I am and can't go looking for the definition of finished grade anyway.
Okay, here's one suggestion to shorten it a teeny bit, in order for a house in a residential zone, can we just say in order for a house? Do we have to have in a residential zone? It takes out seven or eight syllables.
We do have commercial zones in Woodland Hills.
But probably wouldn't be building a house in those, right?
I mean, where the church is along eleven, two hundred north, that is a future residential zone.
No, future commercial zone.
Commercial zone, right, a future commercial zone. So that's one reason we might want to have residential zone in here.
Now we're kind of down to what, two or three words, which.
Yeah, I'm just looking at where we can shorten it.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, really, if, if, if it's one paragraph, which is not bad, looking at some of the other ordinances that I've seen. Some of them are a page long, that one with Elkridge was.
At least that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What I liked about that is that it had bullet points, the English was third grade level. You knew what they meant.
In other words, high school.
One, one thing I might just kind of throw out there though, to put on some thoughts for some future. So I know we're talking specifically building height here, but maybe as we get reviewing the construction standards and development standards, which I think is on the list, we consider, because I did like the one thing Summit Creek had on the differential of the finished versus natural grade. And maybe we consider something like that as we get looking at those standards. Doesn't play into building height, I know, but maybe as we get looking at that, so there's only so much differential you can have. Which kind of addresses the issue of someone coming in and cutting out thirty feet of a hill.
I didn't even think about that.
Let me share with you.
I'll change my vote.
You're good with it or against it?
Go on.
Okay, so we're all unanimous in. Very well. Let me share with you on the subject here. We're going to be probably, one of the things we're going to be having a public hearing on is a part of the city ordinances that were removed on architectural and landscaping standards. And I sent a copy of that to everybody, but based upon, on Lori's thought, I, I added a part to that, to that yesterday or today, number, we can look, it's under building and exterior requirements, since number eight. This is what it says, this is what I added. The city encourages to the maximum extent feasible to build, keeping the natural terrain in mind when designing a home. Buildings should be designed to follow the natural contours rather than modifying the land to accept a building design not tailored to the building site. Cuts and fills should be kept to a minimum, keeping in mind property drainage away from structures and neighboring properties. Now, most of that was taken directly from, was it?
Park City, I think.
No, it was one of these new, I don't, is, it must have been maybe Elk, Elkridge, it was Elkridge's ordinance that had that paragraph. Close to the same paragraph in it. So that kind of, that goes in where in a kind of a design feature more than the, the building height definition itself. But, and that's the lady, when I spoke with her, uh, who's the ombudsman for ordinances, that was her comment that, that the kind of structures and the design should be in a different part of the ordinances, not in a definition of height.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I mean, I don't know if any of you had a chance to read that Summit Creek.
Yeah.
My goodness, I, I don't know if I'd want to build a home over there or not, may, maybe it's more simple than, than what appeared from reading all that, but all of their, all of their requirements that they've got, and power to them, I mean, it, it, it really helps, it will help define the community over there, but.
And it helps maintain the current yeah, the way it looks and everything, and, but I,
and they're encouraging people to use, you know, to come to their architect process, and he's got all of those kind of laid out in his mind and thoughts and knows how to do all that kind of designing. But if somebody were wanting to build their own home over there, my goodness, it would take them. And if they're not familiar with, with that requirement that they have, it'll take them a long time to work through those things and designs and concepts and everything.
The, the only one thing I, one thing I did like out of there, just pulling out one simple idea of theirs was where the finished grade can be no lower than eight and a half feet below the natural grade. So basically what they're saying is if you're going to cut into the mountain, basically you can only cut about eight and a half feet. And that's one thing, before you'd have to step, start stepping your house or your footing or something to build with a hill, that was the one, I, I mean, the whole thing was, yeah, very long and lengthy and. That was the one, I, I mean, the whole thing was, yeah, very long and lengthy. And I'm sure having an architectural committee, probably walks and, you know, helps walk through that. But, but the one, one piece that I did pull out that I liked was just that one spot there. Because then that encourages people not to come in and dig out of a bunch of a hill.
Yeah. They can control that kind of thing over there too.
I think a lot of banks and Petersons would have a tough time building in Summit. Because there's nobody that can build their export ports. There are some way down in the earth in Summit. They're just going to do it. Because those things are down more than eight feet. I mean, they've, they've got twelve foot or fourteen foot ceilings.
And I would guess that Summit Creek doesn't want to promote those kinds of things over there.
Now, how would that be limited?
Well, if you can't be no more than eight feet below the natural grade.
Your finished grade.
The finished.
No, the finished grade can't be, the house can be, but you can do a basement, but the finish, your finished grade can't be no more than eight and a half feet below what the natural grade. Your house could go deeper, but your, so if you had a basement or whatever, it could go down. But your finished grade has to be no more than eight and a half feet of the natural grade. I think even theirs would work because they're, they're not, their finished grade is not eight and a half feet below what the natural grade was.
With those two homes?
Well, at least I've seen Jeremy's, but I don't know. His natural grade? Finished grade, I mean. I don't think his finished grade's lower than eight and a half feet than what the natural was. Because it's, it's actually slipped out quite a, quite a bit.
Yes, yes. One of the weaknesses, Scott, is certainly more than eight feet below that finished grade at the front of the house.
Well, I guess it depends on how you define finished grade. Yeah, you're right. Under our current definition of finished grade, it wouldn't. But if you change finished grade to mean the grade that's finished adjoining that portion of the house, then.
Well.
But, yeah, once back to that definition, yeah, yeah. So you're probably right. Under our definition of finished grade right now, I don't know that would.
Do we need to change that? Do we, should we look at changing finished grade to not just refer to the front of the
Maybe we need to look at that, study it more, I don't know. There may be, you know, what I found with all these, and there's a lot of, a lot of are no answer, they did something for a reason. But often the reason is not evident or it's gotten lost through time as to why a certain thing was done that way. And, you know, if you get an architect to look at that, they may think, oh, this is why, that's why they identified it as the front of the house and not the back or somewhere else. And, and, and maybe this was done so that it allowed walkout basements.
Yeah, so you can say, given our definition of how many stories versus in a walkout basement, I'm sure that's why it was, I'm not sure. I suspect that's why it was done. So you could have a walkout basement without it counting as a story.
Yeah.
Because if you wanted to have a two-story house with a walkout basement, in theory, you couldn't do that if the finished grade was measured there because now it'd be a three-story house. I'm sure that's, I would suspect that's why it was done that way.
Yeah.
You also, we want to talk about water, is that correct?
Yes.
When, when.
Let's, let's go through.
This.
Pardon? Are we through with the building height?
Before we get off the land, architectural landscape.
Okay, let's talk about that.
I'm, I'm curious as to why we want to tell a homeowner that he has to have that big of an evergreen tree to play. Why does it have to be a minimum of five feet in height?
Because you and I and Larry, and I don't know who else was here at the time, defined that. It used, in the old ordinance, I think it was six feet. And we reduced it to five. Now, and that's what I want to bring up tonight. I, I want whatever you, whatever adjustments you feel that we maybe should make to that, let's, let's talk about them. But that's.
Now, are we talking about the entire property or just the landscaping?
Just the lands.
Around the house.
Whatever it says here.
So it's landscaping and, oh, wait a minute, those commercial users.
All evergreen trees planted shall be a minimum of five feet in height.
I think the reason, one reason for that was so that they would not die. There'd be less chance of them dying. If they had a five-foot start, chances are they're going to survive. But, what?
I've got about three evergreen trees in one little corner of my yard. And even though they've been there for three years, they're still only this high. I've got some that are lining my driveway because of the kind they are, kind they are, they're very slow growing. And they're only about this high now, and they've probably grown that much in four or five years. They're just very slow, slow growing. But they are evergreen trees.
I, I think, again, not knowing what went into the other stuff, and some of this came off of Whoopa also, was to give the community a.
Mountainy film.
It's just not a head start, but a start. Here's, here's some mature trees or that they're going to be larger, look at, are not planting small ones. So I suspect that maybe that's one reason why they had six-foot trees. You want to change it? Let's, let's change it if we feel that that's the way to go with, with some of these.
I feel kind of guilty because I have dozens of little maple trees that sprout up right around my house every spring. And rather than just pull them out, I, I walk out about twenty feet back into the maple trees and replant them so they can grow. And they're certainly not inch and a half.
They went, oh, yeah.
We, we can take that thing out altogether.
I think it should be taken out.
Tell me, okay, tell me where it is.
Part D, D one?
No.
D one?
No, our next meeting will be a public hearing.
On this.
On this.
Okay.
So we want to kind of put forth what, and maybe from the public hearing, maybe we'll get the same kind of comments on some other things and we'll decide and adjust, you know, from that. So let's, for now, let's take out number one. Everybody in agreement with, with doing that? Okay. How about all required shrubs shall be a minimum of five-gallon tub size? Is that again, too big?
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
What we want to do?
Don't get that big, yeah.
Okay.
Coming one or two gallon.
And again, not in my defense, but some of this was taken from the Whoopa stuff. So that's what, trying to transition, you know, and eventually potentially.
Well, I think originally though, there was a difference between a certain area around the house that they were recommending more mature plants. Not saying that that had to be on the whole property. For example, I've got a two-acre property, if I want to plant a dozen little shrubs somewhere, I don't want to pay fifty bucks a piece for them.
Yeah. Understand?
I think maybe two ought to be taken out too.
Say again?
I think one and two.
And two, yeah. Okay.
Removed.
Everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. And this by no means is exhaustive, it's just kind of a general.
How about number three?
What, commercial parking areas?
Or driveway? Does that mean home driveways or commercial driveway?
It's intended. Commercial driveway.
It doesn't say commercial driveway, does it?
Commercial.
Okay.
Part of the city.
Okay.
We have a big parking lot. The church would, would fall into that.
Yeah, could, it's.
Okay, I, it didn't, I didn't think it said commercial driveways. But if it's commercial, I think we could leave it.
That's.
Yeah, I'm reading the whole thing.
So we've got four, let's just continue the standards and maintenance. Four, non-natural landscaped areas containing grass, trees or plants shall be maintained with an automatic sprinkler drip irrigation system.
And the reason for that is fire safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Non-natural. And then.
I mean, even in the fire ordinance, it says, you can't have trees closer than so many feet from the structure unless.
Yeah.
It's not sprinkled.
Well, to me, this is just saying you can't have a hose and a sprinkler.
Well, it is. That's true.
Say that again, Lori?
Um, it, to me, it's saying that you can't have your lawn or landscaping watered by a hose and sprinkler.
I think it has to be automatic, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that's what it's saying, you can't use a hose.
It's implying you can't use a hose by saying you have to have.
Like when I grew up and we had a hose that would, and you'd move a sprinkler.
It's not pre-putting that, but you do have to get it all back.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you want to do that. I'm not sure in the summer, Lori, how to do that, to keep it green. There are some areas, it doesn't matter how much sprinkler system is in the apartment.
I think four's okay. I think there's a purpose for four.
Five is a general. Are we asking too much?
Why, why do we have to tell people that they may want to wrap their trees with chicken wire? Why do we have to say that? They can feed the deer.
Hey, somebody moves here from New York and.
Feed the deer.
Hey, I'll just plant a tree out there and don't realize a deer gonna come and mess it up.
We tried that, it didn't work.
Lots of my house that are surrounded by, by wire.
We didn't.
They are not as deer resistant as people said.
Yeah, we've had a lot of deer resistant plants eaten. And if the deer don't get them, the rabbits do. We even bought these little lights, we stuck on our newly planted trees, they're supposed to scare the deer away. They're just little flashing red light. And those didn't even work, so eventually we had to wrap them with wire.
That worked?
Yeah, that works. Yeah, until they figure out they can push the wire in far enough to reach the.
Nine Alberts are deer, deer resistant. The tree thrown next to them, I had to put wire because the bottom, they're calling their pines and the bottoms are just.
Yeah.
So we get to four, five, six?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Which is now two, three, and four, right?
Yeah, no.
One, two, three.
No, three, I'm sorry.
One, two.
One, yeah, two, three, and four. You're right.
Hmm?
Because we kept three.
And we kept three.
So that'll be number one.
Yeah.
One interesting thing on number A, four, I had on there fourteen hundred square feet. Any resident shall have a minimum of, it now says one thousand square feet on the main level exclusive of open porches and garages. It had fourteen in there, Whoopa had eighteen, but the current legislature said that you can't dictate anything under or over a thousand.
Over a thousand.
So I put a thousand in there. Just because that's the state, state requirement now. For a city, now, if you read through Summit Creeks, they, they specify a lot higher than that, but they can do that with their CCNRs.
Thousand or something like that, so.
Yeah, CCNRs, yeah.
Can you require that homes have a second floor or an upstairs? You, you can only say they have to have a thousand feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what the, this latest legislation I was trying to encourage is more affordable and more housing, because there's such a shortage right now.
In our ordinances, if there's a second story, it has to be at least seven or eight hundred square feet. If there's a second story, then there is a second story. There isn't anyone.
Yes, sir.
In our city ordinances, or the CCNR or city ordinances?
In the CCNRs, thousand or sixteen, higher than that. Twelve hundred, not a hundred, twelve hundred.
Oops.
Maybe right. I don't remember seeing that requirement. It's not, it's not part of the definition, but.
I just remember when my house was built, they, they told me that, I said, well, the CCNR said it has to be twelve hundred square feet on the second floor. And mine wasn't that much, I think mine ended up being nine hundred. And they said, well, the city will let you buy. And then I looked it up later, and the city's requirement was less than the CCNRs. And since the city doesn't, doesn't use CCNRs, they only use the ordinances. Our bonus rooms upstairs were five. That's in there somewhere. I, I can.
Okay, I'm just curious because I don't remember. Okay. And any other issues that, on that, that, and again, we, we don't have to be absolute tonight, but if there are any things that we want to change tonight, we can, we can always make changes in April as well, for the public hearing.
I, one of the things that I noticed in here, that it talks about corrugated metal roofing is not allowed. How do we define corrugated metal roofing? Because, I mean, even on the male structure down there, it's, it's not like that, but there are peaks and then flat, and then peaks and then flat, and then.
Yeah, those are.
To some extent.
All metal roofs have that. Well, they call that, hang on, I'll get the name of it, because mine, mine has that same thing on it. It's got a name for it. It's not corrugated, it's called, um. I'll think of the name of it. Give me a minute, I'll think of it. Yeah, corrugated.
Non-corrugated.
Not, but that, that kind you're talking about is what's on my house too, and they do, they have a name for that.
Yeah. The corrugated is, is a consistency with that.
And that, and that's what I understood it to be, but, you know, with others are, have a corrugated part to them.
But it's not referred, it's not, there's a different name for it. And that's why above that it says, you know, non-corrugated metal roofing is okay. So metal, non-corrugated, as long as it's not that corrugated, then you can use that for roofing material.
Okay, I, I, I was just, I wasn't sure.
Let's move on to the, uh, to the water.
Might be called ribbed, I'm not sure.
Ribbed roofing?
Don't quote me on that yet. But that's a name, that's one of the names I saw.
Well, we've got non-corrugated metal roofing.
I'm going to, I'm going to Google now, Google knows everything.
Confuse Google. Have you had a chance to look through the water requirement policy chapter? You have?
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I said.
One, one question I have is, is there are two or three different fonts?
Yeah, and that'll get straightened out. It's a different, it's a whole different font than the rest of it.
Several different meanings in that.
Yeah.
So that all needs to be consistent.
Yeah, we'll get that. It's a little technical, but the city's been without it.
Right, it's about two pages, right?
It is, two and a half pages.
Just a few sentences on that last page.
Yeah, yeah. We have, including Summit Creek and Four Seasons, they've given us water rights, they haven't given, for what they've done so far. And what they do is, is they get a final plat, then they, they do, they give warrant, they title, they title it to the city. Get the warranty deed or a quick claim deed. Or. If they warranty deed or a quick claim deed, or however many units that they're doing a final plat on.
Wayne? Can you help me understand just what a water right is? I, I just don't understand.
So all the state, the state owns all the water. And by giving you a water right, they're giving you the right to use that water that they've allocated to you. But the water technically is still owned by the state.
But you can, but, but some of the dialogue I've heard before was we were going like to Payson to get a right, or to some other city to get a right. But it seems to be the state that's going to be the ones that.
Well, and you have to file, so you have to buy, so you have to buy the rights, right? The, the state technically owns all the water, but you buy the rights.
You can determine what you want to do with it with the state's approval.
Yeah.
But you can sell it to somebody else. The state doesn't get a piece of that. And you can, it's allocated, um, it's, it's really, Ted knows, it's really, you know, you can sell a water right that's here to Salt Lake. And if there's a way, and so the state, the state takes it away from you here and transfers the right to Salt Lake if they have a means of getting to the water, not your specific water, but to water up there in Salt Lake.
So the fact that we have water rights from, let's say, all over the state, I mean, all our water is really coming out of our wells.
Correct.
But since it's under the ground, it's owned by the state, I guess.
I think if you own a piece of property without a water right, you cannot connect to the water. Because I know there's some cabin lots that don't have water rights.
They may be able to get them if they dug a well, but they have to have approval from the state to do that.
And you have to.
So otherwise, they would have a tank, maybe that they would bring water and fill.
And they have to find someone who's willing to sell that water right because the state is, is allocated. They have given out all the water there is, basically.
More, and they're over.
More, yeah, they're over allocated. And, and usually, it's a lot easier if it's in the same basin. So like, Payson is technically really in our same basin. So to transfer water right from there to here is not as difficult, even though it can be somewhat of a process, as it would be to transfer water right from here to Salt Lake. That might be a little more complicated. Still can be done because they're different basins, water basins.
But some of our. When I look at, I have been looking at the state snow report. And the Provo-Jordan River Basin really includes part of Salt Lake.
No, that's a river basin.
Yeah.
Which can be a little different from a, uh, we'll say for lack of a better word, water basin, but.
Our, our water here goes up there. Because the water comes from Jordanell, Deer Creek, down to Provo, Utah Lake, and goes up then to Salt Lake. Yeah, to Salt Lake. So we often get water that may be designated going to Salt Lake, but it gets pulled back to Utah County. But then it lessens what Salt Lake has available to, whoever that is up there. And it gets allocated then to a city or entity here in Utah County.
If you want to start a fun discussion, go to Unah County and start talking about this. Because central Utah developed a lot of water out in Unah, out in Duchenee County, in Unah Basin. And a lot of that water through Strawberry comes to the valley here. Uh, comes through starvation to Strawberry to here. So a lot of the water that, not a lot, but, you know, there's a good portion of water that we get that comes from Duchenee County area. And so you can transfer in, through basins with, um.
So the state then has given out all the water rights to political jurisdictions?
Individuals. An individual can own a water right. If you have a well, you have a water right to pump that water out of the well.
So in order to drill that well, though, you have to have permission from the state.
You have to have a water right, a water right and permission to drill it.
So what happens to if you have a water barrel?
That's a whole different ball of wax. You can only collect so much. Yeah, because.
The state passed that a number of years.
That water goes into the ground, and there are downstream people who rely on that water for their municipal systems and is the theory. So you can collect it, but only so much.
Or if you're by a river, you can't take some of the water.
In, in Tona, there are huge concrete systems where they collect the rainwater. And for, for most of the existence of Tona, that's where they got their water during the dry season.
Yeah.
Now, they actually have drilled wells. And so, was so amazing to me that Tona Topu, which is the largest island in, in Tona. You drill down and it's surrounded by the Pacific Ocean, but you drill down and you get fresh water.
Or if it's because it gets filtered enough.
The creation of the world for that.
Yeah.
I mean, that island's only thirty-five miles long by fifteen miles wide.
There used to be a pond in Willden Hills, um, up there.
Thousand Oaks?
No.
Area?
No, um.
Up on Broad Hollow?
No, just straight up here, not Broad Hollow. I'm not sure of the name. I'd have to look it up. But there was a, an old house that was torn down. I mean, maybe in the forties. It looked old. But the foundation was there, and there was a pond and a little spring that came up from the ground. Now someone's built a house on it.
It probably got depleted over the years. And it gets even, it gets very technical too, because the state classi- classifies waters as a priority. And some of the priorities go back to the eighteen hundreds. And so if there happened to be a shortage in one area, and if you don't have, if your priority is nineteen seventy, you may not have use of that water. But the person who has that water that has a priority of eighteen hundred, they'll use it. So all that's taken into consideration as well in, in the state.
Um, what happens when, because we've had several people that have bought several lots and combined them, are they giving away or losing some of their water rights?
City keeps it.
The city keeps it. They don't keep it, even though it was kind of included in the price of their lot, maybe?
City keeps it. We don't give, we don't give water back. And that's what, that's what this document does. City's been doing that, but
That protects the city.
Formalizes that process. And right now, for every lot, the developer has to provide point nine oh acre feet of water for each lot that they have.
Is that a statewide?
No, each city makes their own determination. Ours used to be point four or five, half of that. But then we looked and realized years ago that, that we weren't keeping up with the water usage. So that's why we started to require more of each lot. And point nine oh seems to be a balance right now where it's providing for what our.
And is that amount consistent no matter the size of the lot, like a half acre or a two acre, it's all point nine acre feet?
Yes.
It's using.
Some, some cities don't do it that way. Some cities will have a different amount depending on the size of the lot.
Most of them usually, because we work with quite a few cities on this, most of them will average it. So they say you need point four or five acre feet for indoor use. So just whatever you use indoors is usually point four or five. Then on top of that, you add your outdoor use, and that's where it varies. Um, a lot, you know, more so between communities and cities because some have large half acre landscape lots. So so a lot of cities will try and average it, and they do that through their water demand. They can determine their water demand every year. Then they'll average that out and say, okay, on average, this is what our outdoor use is. And then that accounts for some that don't use as much and some that use more.
So what happens if the lot is subdivided?
Then they have to provide point nine oh acre feet for, for that other lot. Once they're, once they're going to a final plat. Now, the subdivision itself doesn't require that at that point. But once they go to a final plat, to plat that, then.
Each lot has to have a point nine oh. An acre foot, one acre, one foot deep, is that what an acre?
Yes, that's how.
What if it's an individual that's the one in their lot?
Then the individual provides it. They have to come up with a point nine oh acre feet of water from somewhere. And there's, there's water shares available on the market. Sometimes they're pretty pricey. Um, I don't know, last I checked, anywhere from three, four thousand dollars an acre foot of water. Is it higher now? What is it up to?
I would guess you're around at least six-ish to eight. I know my dad's got, I don't know how many, but he, he can get anywhere from six to eight from them, from them. And I hear that's kind of what they go for a bit of a house.
We sold some water rights in Spanish Fork a couple of years ago, and there was no market for it then because so many of the farmers were selling their fields, and they were the ones that required more water than a home, I think. And so they.
Probably for irrigation.
Yeah, so they had a lot of water rights available in Spanish Fork. Yeah. So it probably depends on the area and what's happening.
Water's getting tighter and tighter. The city is, or the state is, uh, monitoring a lot more. They used to let water rights sit quite a bit without being used. And now they're requiring at least individuals to put water to beneficial use, or they run the risk of losing that water after a period of time if it's not put to beneficial use.
Seven years, every seven years, you have to prove beneficial use. So every seven years, if you have a water right, you have to submit a beneficial use form to the state showing how you're using that water. And if you're an individual, or now municipals are, municipalities are a little bit more protected about, from losing water rights.
The municipals kind of have a, a safety.
Yeah, because they've got to, they've got to save, they've got to hold on to water rights for growth, right? But if you're an individual and you own a water right and you can't demonstrate you've, you've put it to beneficial use, you can lose that, right? And it goes back to the state and they'll reallocate it.
Without any kind of recognition, compensation.
Like my dad, uh, dad always says, uh, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting.
Who was a sheriff, was killed over water right dispute, irrigation, between a brother and his sister. Brother shot him.
It's, it's pretty scarce right now.
Back a year, a long time ago, but he's not the only one, you know, who was.
I mean, in the early days of Utah, the bishops, they were offering the ones that would, would.
Mediate?
Mediate the disputes over water.
Yeah, yeah. He was a sheriff, so he, he was it. Okay, the next item is the trails, hiking paths, and walkways. This, again, is a ordinance that we, we removed to facilitate codification. It's not really long. Um, but right now, we've only got a couple of paragraphs, and I've incorporated some of that information in the generic paragraphs into this document here. Just kind of define things. I know there's a lot of attention being given in the city now about trails and walkways, and a lot of interest in it. So, uh, this is, I, I, this is just to kind of think, think, get the city started in moving forward with some general guidelines and some definitions here um, with trails and walkways. We're trying to work with Summit Creek to, uh, have residents use their walking paths that was originally designed that way and approved. And, um, HOA there has expressed some reservations about city using it, but I think we're, we're on a path to, to move forward and get that hopefully be able to use that. So this is just kind of designed to get things going and put it back onto, in a little more detail into our city ordinances. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at that yet, or if you have any questions on it. It's pretty straightforward. One of the, one of the issues that no doubt will come up eventually is the switchbacks, whether they're a combination, uh, motorized and non-motorized. Some, uh, have the view that they would just as soon have them not motorized. But, um, they've been motorized forever, I think, and, and not, they're, they're a hiking path as well, so that, that'll be a decision, I guess, if that comes to pass with, with the city council probably.
Wasn't that installed originally as a Jeep road for a sheep herder? I, I, I met the grandson of the guy who actually built it. He lives down Lower Canyon.
I can't imagine a Jeep using that. I can see.
I think it was originally.
ATV or something.
Before ATVs existed, I think. And that's what a lot of ATV trails nowadays are. They're all Jeep trails. I heard that was an old Jeep trail. It's what it was, he used a bulldozer to put it in. And.
Must have filled in a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sure it has. It's grown, a lot of grown.
No, I don't. Who was that person?
Oh, I wish I could remember his name, but he was just down Lower. He was telling me about all the original construction. It was his grandpa that, that had the property up there and actually put in the trail. I have to go back and look, and I can't remember. And he was telling me about kind of the history of it, and it was, I can't remember if it was for sheep herding or hunting, one of the two. But it was kind of before ATVs existed is when that trip, was when that was put in. And he did it more for a Jeep trail and then. It was just kind of an interesting history. Neither here nor there, but it's kind of an interesting history.
Uh, you know Mike Taylor?
Uh-huh.
He, he, he grew up here in Spanish Fork, and he traveled, he was all over here hunting and stuff all the time, everything. He knows a lot of the people who were here then, and he was involved with a lot of their parents and stuff like that too.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, any, any, if you've had a chance to look at it, anything stick out at you that we might have second pause over, or again, a lot of it's kind of generic. We'll, we'll put that forward and see what, uh, public comment is on it.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's fairly high level stuff.
There was one more area that I wanted to just touch on is, um, Craig North, our fire chief, is, wants to change the criteria for, um, hydrants on a lot, uh, not more restrictive, but more, he feels that there's more latitude that the city can, can give in our current requirement and still be in keeping with our fire code. So he's put some, suggested some new language in the development and construction standards as it relates to fire hydrants on lots. Herefore, if the back corner of the lot was more than a hundred and fifty feet from the roadway frontage of that home, they require to have another fire hydrant on the lot, and including a turnaround, uh, hammerhead there. And, uh, Craig feels that, that that can be extended to two hundred and fifty feet instead of a hundred and fifty feet. I, I think, I think a hundred and fifty was a conservative figure way back when. And so, in looking at things, and particularly what the requirement for the number of fire hydrants on a street, that he feels that, um, that two hundred and fifty feet would be fine in the distance going back instead of the hundred and fifty feet. So.
Part of that's the reach of the fire hoses from the, from the truck?
Yeah. So that could be another possibly reason too.
So does that, does it matter if the lot is, um, right by the hydrant or farther down the road, it's still just two hundred and fifty?
No, if it's, if there's one that's, sometimes these hydrants are right there at the street between homes. And if that's the case, if there is a hydrant there, then they not gonna have to have another one. But if there's a fire hydrant four hundred down, four hundred feet down the road, that's the spacing. My analogy is wrong. There's two hundred feet down the road. Spacing four hundred feet, there's supposed to be a fire hydrant. So if you got one that's two hundred feet away, then the back of the house be more than two hundred and fifty feet. So they, they would require a fire hydrant, an extra fire hydrant on that particular house.
Okay.
And fire hydrants aren't cheap. They're probably around ten thousand dollars to put a fire hydrant in, everything. And then there's a turnaround, a hammerhead. They have to enlarge their driveway and make space there for a fire truck to be able to turn around.
That's if they didn't. If they put a fire hydrant in, then.
Yes, correct, correct. No.
No, they have to have a hammerhead. You have to be able to get the truck down there and turn it around if there's a hydrant down there.
If you've got fire hydrants four hundred feet apart, and you put a new one in between.
You have to have a turnaround in that driveway for a fire.
Not if it's in, not if the one, not if it's in the street.
No, if you're good with the street, you're okay. But if you have to put a fire hydrant.
At the back of your house.
On the property.
On your property.
But in this case, these two are on the street, and you put another one in here, you're good. It's still on the street, then you don't have to.
Yeah, correct, but that's not the requirement, the requirement is four hundred feet apart.
Well, but if you put one every two hundred feet.
Then here, okay.
Because you can't reach it from here or here, and you put one on the street here, then it would be with.
But the subdivision won't do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's kind of the difference between a developer and a private property owner, because the developer's only going to put them every four hundred feet, because that's all they're required to do, and they're not going to spend more money than they have to. And then you get a home builder that's bought an individual lot, now he puts his house back in, far into the lot, and now his house is two hundred and fifty feet away from the road, and he's not got a hydrant near him, now he's going to have to install that hydrant back in his property, so you can.
Usually with the fifty foot frontage, they're covered with, with a four hundred foot requirement on the street, but when they start putting their house further back.
Fifty feet from.
This is in the front, then, then that's when they start running into.
Especially when you get lots that are pie-shaped from the street back, they're going to want to put their house back.
Set it back further.
And then when you have a hydrant.
Yeah.
On hollow.
Yeah.
But has a little tiny frontage.
Yeah.
Like that.
He's gonna put a hydrant on it.
And if you have a hydrant back there, you have to have a means for the fire truck to turn around, so you gotta put in a hammerhead.
So, um, there's a couple of other things, we're gonna, I talked to Jody, a couple of tweaking of a couple of our ordinances with some time requirements to, to make them more in line with the state, what the state requires, uh, on time of filing for appeals, so forth, and we'll put all that. That'll be part of the public hearing, but that will be outlined and articulated in that notice that goes out as well, so. That will all be for April. Are there any other things that?
So, are we planning on one meeting in April, or?
Yes, well, April, one. It might be kind of a long one, but it'll be a public hearing and then our meeting.
So, when is our next meeting?
It's on the third Wednesday in April.
Having three meetings this month.
It has, and I thank you all for being diligent.
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
No. Sounds right.
Um, one question, at city council meeting, somebody brought up, um, they were talking about being a dark skies community, does that have to do with planning commission?
It doesn't come through the planning commission.
A million years.
You know a little bit about it at all, or?
Yeah.
Okay, city council, yes, that's proposed, but it doesn't come to planning.
Okay. I didn't know if light was.
Now, one, one thing that we eventually will need to address, and it hasn't been addressed for a long time, and that's our light standards in the city, and that could have an impact on that. We do have a lighting, uh, section in our ordinance, it's really outdated, LED lights now, and, uh, it talks about seventy-five watt bulbs and maximum lumens and things like that, and, um, we'll eventually need to make some modifications to that to bring it into reality, so. Any other comments or thoughts?
I move when you adjourn.
Okay? All in favor of adjourn?
Second.
All right.
Hi.
I adjourn.